Wheat Ridge, Colorado for June 10, 2019. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please poll the council? Or actually call the roll? Not polling the council.
Yeah, polling comes later. Zachary Urban.
Present.
David Keeter.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Larry Dougla—
Here.
Larry Matthews, I'm sorry.
Both of us are here.
This is a man at our church named Larry Douglas, I'm sorry. Larry Matthews. Janice Hoppy.
Present.
And Mr. Pond has excused himself for this evening.
Thank you. And we've got some proclamations and ceremonies, so I'll go to the podium. Our first proclamation tonight is for Men's Health Month, June 2019. I'm a man, so this applies to me and all the men out there. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventive health can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in healthy screenings. And whereas fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthier children. And whereas the Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventive health practices. And whereas Men's Health Month website has been established at www.menshealthmonth.org and features resources, proclamations, and information about awareness, events, and activities, including Wear Blue for Men's Health. And whereas Wheat Ridge Men's Health Month will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, and prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. And whereas the citizens of our city are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now therefore I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim June as Men's Health Month in Wheat Ridge and encourage all of our citizens to pursue preventive health practices and early detection efforts. Dated this 10th day of June 2019, Bud Starker, Mayor. Our next proclamation is about Wheat Ridge Safety Month, June 2019. I'd like to invite Allison Schreck to join me at the podium. Thank you for coming. Wheat Ridge Safety Month, June 2019. Whereas in conjunction with the National Safety Council and thousands of organizations across the country who share the goal of raising safety awareness. And whereas National Safety Month focuses on reducing leading causes of injury and death at work, on the roads, and in our homes and communities, and to draw attention to safe practices that will decrease the likelihood of accidents. And whereas all citizens deserve to live in communities that promote safe and healthy living environments. And whereas safe communities require the cooperation of all levels of government, business and industry, employees, as well as the general public. And whereas through the support and observance of National Safety Month each year, employees are helping to reverse an increase in accidental injuries and death in the workplace. And whereas the city supports safe efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees by supporting the Be Safe Safety Committee. And whereas the city works to prevent accidental injuries by educating employees about safe and healthy practices in the workplace through training and encouragement. And whereas the beginning of the summer season, traditionally a time of increased accidents and injuries, is an appropriate time to focus attention on risk management and prevention. Now therefore I, Bud Starker, and the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, formally designate June as Wheat Ridge Safety Month and urge all citizens to establish and maintain safe practices in their homes, workplaces, and community. And witness thereof, on this 10th day of June 2019, Bud Starker, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few things?
Sure, I'd like to. Thank you very much. Good evening, Allison Schreck, Administrative Services Director. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I would just like to thank council and the mayor, of course, and our city manager for your support of the employees here in Wheat Ridge. We just completed our CERSA audit, and I was able to experience for the first time, firsthand, how well-prepared we are here in Wheat Ridge. Our auditor was thrilled with our work, and we really do have an organization that embraces a culture of safety. So this month alone, we have a very active safety committee, and this month alone, they've been working on promoting all kinds of safety-related classes and trainings, such as fire extinguisher training, defensive driver training, dealing with heat and stress, preventing accidents in the workplace, preventing slips, trips, and falls, and basic first aid, along with run, hide, and fight. So again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, and thank you to your committee. I was not as safe as I should have been this morning because I didn't wear a hat today. It's outside. Okay, we have another proclamation about the 2020 census, and if Jenny Poole Radway is here, would she join me? And I also want to thank you for joining.
Thank you.
And we have developed a complete count committee in the city, and I want to invite any of these citizens and employees of the city who are here to join me. Sergeant Bobby Dawkins, Scott Cutler, Sarah Spalding, Therese Devine, Robin Baker, Dominic Breton, Sarah Ellis, Ron Benson, and Allison Schreck. Those are people that are on our complete count committee. Recognizing the City of Wheat Ridge's support for the 2020 census and forming a complete count committee to support the Complete Count Campaign. Whereas the United States Census determines the allocation of seats for the U.S. House of Representatives, redistricting of state and local government district boundaries, and distribution of more than $675 billion in federal funds to state, local, and tribal governments. And whereas the State of Colorado's governor signed into effect an executive order which established the 2020 Colorado Complete Count Campaign. And whereas the 2020 Complete Count Campaign shall promote and advertise the 2020 census, respond to the population's questions and concerns about the census, focus resources on hard-to-count areas and populations, and ensure the highest participation rate possible. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge will benefit from a complete count committee to ensure residents understand the census process, trust in its confidentiality, understand its importance, and fulfill their obligation to participate as is required by law. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge will benefit from accurate population and demographic counts to address existing and future considerations. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge wishes to support the 2020 Complete Count Campaign. Now therefore I, Bud Starker, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me to do, hereby recognize, and support the 2020 Colorado Complete Count Campaign. And witness thereof, on this 10th day of June 2019, Bud Starker, Mayor. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Terrific.
Talk to you. Thank you so much for this. We are really excited to partner with the City of Wheat Ridge in making sure that everyone gets counted once, only once, and in the right place. And we welcome anyone who would like to join us on the complete count committee. I know that anyone who could help the city, whether it be a community member or a staff member, a city council member, would be a great addition. So thank you so much.
Right. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the approval of the minutes. Counselors, you have the council minutes of April 8, 2019, and study session notes of March 18, 2019, and April 1, 2019. Are there any corrections? Mr. Keeter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the April 8, City Council Minutes on Page 6, I have not had the time to look back at the tape, but my recollection is that I voted in favor of the motion to excuse Council Member Weaver from that particular discussion.
Okay, so this is on the April 8, and give me again the page reference.
Page 6.
Page 6.
About two-thirds of the way down the page.
Okay.
Doesn't affect the outcome of the—because it was unanimous was required, but that was my recollection of my intent.
Saying that you voted in favor of—
In favor of the motion to excuse Ms. Weaver. So I believe the motion failed four to three.
Apologize for that, and we'll correct it.
Okay. Are there any other corrections to note in the minutes? With that one correction, we will let the minute stand as presented. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Is there—are there any modifications to the agenda, and is there any item that any counselor wishes to pull off of the consent agenda before we get to that item? Okay, then the agenda will stay as presented, and there's no items that need to be removed from the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question. I know we were given something that's going to extend the public hearing to another time. I just didn't know if we were—
This is on item number two, and I think we'll deal with that on item number two.
Okay, okay. I just didn't know if it came to the public comment and things like that, that they won't comment tonight if they came.
Okay.
We wanted them to be on the other—
We will—
So it's up to you, but—
All right. We'll deal with that on item number two.
Okay.
We are now at the citizen's right to speak. And we have a sign-up sheet, so when I call—you—this is on any item that is not an agenda item. The public is invited to speak at the podium for three minutes. When I call your name, if you would come to the podium and adjust the microphone so we can hear you clearly, give us your first name and last name, and if you would spell your last name and give us your address, then we will start the timer after that, and our clerk will time that. And we have some buttons. The green light will appear when the speaker commences speaking, and it will flash when you have 30 seconds remaining. The light turns yellow with 15 seconds remaining, and when the light turns red, your time is up, and if you would close your remarks. So with that being said, our first speaker is Suzanne Teal, I believe, and Sandy Nance on deck.
I would like to give my three minutes to Sandy Nance.
Okay, then Sandy Nance, if you would like to come to the podium, and you'll have six minutes.
That's N-A-N-C-E. I live at 4097 Field Drive. Hello again. I come today to kind of comment on the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. I attended those NRS meetings at every stage of the way. I want to state for the record that I am not a no-grother. Wheat Ridge needs more income to provide the services that we expect, and I am pleased to see the NRS call for two community relations professionals to be hired to confer with neighbors like mine. But that does not solve the basic problem Wheat Ridge residents have with their city government right now. The power to make decisions on matters affecting the quality of development in the city still rests in the hands of one staffer who does not need to answer to citizen opinion or to our elected or appointed officials. I'm passing out these pictures of the house that that one staffer approved that caused more than 20 of my neighbors to come here and protest. There is a clause in the zoning code that would have allowed Mr. John Stone to refuse a lot subdivision because it created a flag lot. The clause reads, "Flag lots are not encouraged but are permitted when the most appropriate development option"—but they are the most appropriate development option as determined by the Community Development Director. He was confronted by neighbors who thought subdividing this corner lot was not an appropriate development of this home's large lot, and he pretended he had no choice. He refused requests to find a way to convene a public hearing and quickly approved the subdivision and flag lot. As you can see from the pictures, the house he approved sticks out like a giant middle finger in this picturesque neighborhood. There ought to be some penalty for developers who engage in duplicitous communication, like telling folks the house would be one and a half stories and then building a three-story, 3,000-square-foot white siding monstrosity 30 feet from the street. I call on City Council to immediately pass an ordinance that all lot subdivisions and flag lot creations must be decided by the Planning Commission after giving notice to neighbors and holding public hearings. The Community Development Director is protecting his bureaucratic power and does not seem to value the beauty of Wheat Ridge's high-end neighborhoods. City Council needs to put a check on his power. Otherwise, these listening tours that the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy talks about are just one big empty PR gesture, and it does not fool me. On a better note, I would like to commend to the council that I've read and studied about the art space project, and I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other people signed up to speak on citizen's right to speak. Is there anyone here who has not signed up who would like to speak under citizen's right to speak on any item not on the agenda? You may do so now. All right, I don't see anyone, so we will move forward on our agenda. And Ms. Hoppy, will you please introduce the consent agenda, item number one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to introduce consent agenda items A through C. Item A, motion to award purchase and installation of Henderson snow and ice control equipment and approve subsequent payment to Auto Truck Group of Colorado Springs, Colorado for a total amount not to exceed $107,650. B, Resolution Number 33-2019, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2019 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $12,500 for the purpose of funding half of the art space feasibility study. And C, motion to approve payment to Bank of Oklahoma for 2019 principal and interest payments in the amount of $3,498,300 for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado Sales and Use Tax Revenue Bond Series 2017A.
Second.
Thank you. A motion is in order.
I move to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dossman. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number two. Mr. Matthews, would you please introduce item number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is Resolution Number 34-2019, a resolution approving a major subdivision plat for property zoned residential three and located at 11661 West 44th Avenue, case number WS-19-01, known as Riverside Terrace. At this point, Mr. Mayor, I think I should bring up the fact there's been a request to postpone this.
Well, we're going to go there.
And not take more time?
Well, we're going to—we've received a memo from Mr. John Stone about that the Planning Commission has not completed their work on this. Would you please tell us where that's at?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As councilors are aware, major subdivisions require the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and then forward a recommendation to City Council for your consideration when you conduct your public hearing. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing last Thursday. They did, in fact, close that public hearing and then considered various options for moving forward. Ultimately, they had requested some additional information, and as such, they continued their public hearing to July 18. The next available City Council date for a regular business meeting after July 18 is August 12. So we're requesting that you consider a motion to continue this public hearing to that date.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, is a motion in order? Let me go to our attorney and find out whether we want to open the public hearing at this time or not.
Well, in order to continue the public hearing, you'd need to open it, but once you have, you can take any action, and it's been common in the city to, where there's a need like this, to postpone the hearing, to open the hearing, immediately take a motion to postpone. So that's a proper procedure.
And I have one person signed up to speak on that. So would it be your recommendation that we open the public hearing and have public testimony?
You have that option, but once you have opened a hearing and then you take an action to continue it, there is public notice, including of persons that are in attendance here, of the continued hearing. So you can do either thing. You can open the hearing and take the testimony and then postpone, you can open the hearing and take a motion to postpone. Or truly, in that case, it's really you're only continuing the hearing that you've opened.
Well, I would think we would want to open the public hearing, and so I'm going to open the public hearing and take public comment. So we have one person signed up to speak, Mr. John Clark, if you'd like to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I didn't see that going that way, to be honest with you. I jotted down some notes. I didn't have a whole lot of time, but I jotted—oh, I'm sorry, John Clark, 4665 Swallow. I think everybody knows that by now. But I jotted down some notes. I think they may or may not be relevant at this time because of the action you guys just took. But I came here tonight to ask you to move and vote to deny this council bill regarding the 44th Avenue, simply because you can't. And sometimes I think people don't realize they can. So planning did move to deny this resolution. I'm sure that none of you have watched the tape for certain reasons, but I sat here through it. They moved to deny it, and then they moved to postpone it. So when the lights came up on the board, it was denied. So at that point, as far as I was concerned, it was over. Now, that being said, we went into over an hour, back and forth with staff, commissioners, and they proceeded to destroy this book. And I didn't time it all, but I know it was over an hour. And I don't know if you can see that, but that's Robert's Rules of Order. And it was—it was almost funny if it wasn't so sad. It was just—it was sad. You know, the hiccup, of course, is they stopped this rubber stamping. And the citizens have just become used to that. We're used to the developers coming in, wanting this, staff recommending approval, the commissioners recommending approval, you all recommending approval. And then the developer gets what he wants, and in the meantime, the citizens get bent over. I mean, it's just so typical. And we see it time and time and time again, to the point where when I ask citizens out there, "Why don't you come to the Planning Commission with me? Why don't you come to council with me?" Ah, city's going to do whatever they want. You got no choice. You got no chance. You got—we can't change it. Well, Thursday night, we stopped it, and we changed it. So I would really hope that somebody looks at this, because Thursday night was a melee. And I mean, I guess I could take this book home and throw it in my fireplace, because it meant nothing on Thursday night, absolutely nothing. You know, no one ever questions the lies and the motives and the collusion that the developer and staff—I mean, we have hired staff, and we have appointed commissioners, and we have elected officials, and everybody's just, "Rubber stamping, rubber stamping, rubber stamping, rubber stamping." And I think you're going to hear that again a little bit later, but I'm not going to get off topic. But I think it's just sad that what happened on Thursday was actually a win for the citizens, and then we come Monday and we're going to defile it. We're just going to take what happened Thursday, and we're just going to change it around to make sure that it works for us, that we get our way, that the developer gets what he wants. And staff is going to be right, no matter what. And I think it's sad, and I'm a third-generation Wheat Ridge resident. I have two boys that will not be a fourth-generation Wheat Ridge resident. I have two boys that will not be a fourth-generation Wheatridge resident. This city is running straight into the ground, straight into the ground. And I, I, I don't know that I wanna go into why Planning stopped it. Um, that's for you guys to figure out, but, you know, I don't get paid for this. I stopped shopping at the Home Depot because they want me to check my own shit out at the counter, and I said, "You know what? I don't work here. I don't work here. I'm here every Monday. I'm here on Thursdays. I don't work here, guys." You think you guys could maybe do this? The citizens of this town are disgusted. I will tell you that. And I will tell you what I told Planning on Thursday, that I'm out in the community. Most of you know that I am. I'm in the high school, I'm at the Grange, I'm at events, sit on boards, sit on commissions, and the people tell me, the citizens of Wheatridge tell me, "We're going downhill fast, guys. We're going downhill really fast." And the citizens do not, do not trust their government. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. That was the only speaker that I had signed up. Is there anyone here who has not signed up who would like to speak on this, uh, at this public hearing? Okay, I don't see anyone. Uh, Mr. Matthews, then, I believe a, a motion is in order.
I move to continue the City Council public hearing for case number WS dash one-nine-dash-oh-one, a request for approval of a major subdivision on property located at one-one-six-six-one West Forty-Fourth Avenue and Zoned Residential Three to August twelfth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. Uh, motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews?
Um, I'm assuming that when we hear the rest of this case on, in August, that we will have a full report of what happened at Planning Commission, based on the comments just made by someone who was there.
Any additional discussion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Uh, thank you. We will move to item number three. Ms. Doosman, would you please introduce item number three?
Yes, let my computer get there real quick. It's been having a couple of network issues. Council Bill number zero-seven dash two thousand and nineteen, an ordinance removing the local historic landmark status from an accessory structure on property located at one-one-four-eight-zero West Forty-Fourth Avenue, case number WHL dash one-nine dash zero-one slash McIntyre. So the issue, uh, the applicant is requesting removal of the local historic landmark status from an accessory structure on property located at one-one-four-eight-zero West Forty-Fourth Avenue in the Agricultural One Zone District. The current owner purchased the property in two thousand and thirteen. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, it's a quasi-judicial matter. Uh, if you intend to speak on this matter, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you affirm that the testimony that you are about to give in this matter is the truth as you understand it? If you do, please say yes.
Yes.
You may be seated. Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have an ordinance number?
We do. This will be ordinance number sixteen sixty-nine.
Ordinance number sixteen sixty-nine. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation?
We do. Our planner, Scott Cutler.
Mr. Tucker, please, um, please continue.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Cutler. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department, um, here to hear tonight, case number WHL nineteen dash zero-one, which is a request for approval of the removal of the local historic landmark status for an accessory structure on property located at one-one-four-eight-zero West Forty-Fourth Avenue. I'd like to enter the public record, the contents of the case file, the local historic regulations, and this digital presentation. The properties within the City of Wheatridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear the case. And I'll give a brief presentation. Most of the information is found in your council action form, as well as some attachments. So this property, uh, this is a two thousand and eighteen aerial view of the property. Uh, the property's outlined in red. It's located on West Forty-Fourth Avenue, uh, on the south side, just west of Robb Street, um, and then the green belt is located further to the south. Uh, the barn, which is the accessory structure in question, is located on the southeast corner of the property, and uses that surround the site are mostly commercial on the south side, um, with the green belt further south, and then some residential further to the west and east. So the history of this property, um, the previous owner of the property applied for a local historic landmark status in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, that is something that citizens in the city can do, and it's approved by City Council ordinance. So it was approved under case number WHL ninety-eight dash zero-one. And then, um, as was stated earlier, the new owner, uh, purchased the property in two thousand and thirteen and has requested to remove the local historic designation from that barn, which was dedicated under case W, on WHL ninety-eight oh-one. And photos of the barn are provided in the attachments. So the process in the city, um, there are some eligibility requirements which allow an applicant, uh, to actually apply to remove or to apply for local historic status, and in this case, the applicant is, uh, applying to remove the local historic designation. Um, so one of the eligibility requirements is that it's a new owner of the property. Basically, this means that an owner that was not the owner at the time that, uh, the property was designated as a historic designation. And then number two, no public funds have been just distributed to renovate the structure. There was also a fifteen-day public hearing noticing for this hearing, and we did not receive any phone calls or letters from the public. So in this instance, um, we have found that the applicant is eligible to apply for this local historic designation removal per section twenty-six dash nine-one-three A three of the city code. It is a new owner. The owner was different than the one that applied for the designation, and no public funds have been distributed. There are no review criteria for this type of application, so staff is not making a recommendation on this request. We're just presenting the fact that we have found that the applicant is eligible to apply to remove this designation. The applicant is in attendance this evening and has some prepared remarks, and she and I are both available for questions. Thanks.
If the applicant would like to come up and, uh, and make her remarks.
Thank you for hearing me out, and I would like, my name is Sandra McIntyre. I would like to, uh...
And if you would spell your last name and give us your address, please.
M.C. capital E. A. R.E.
Before you get, before you get going, Ms. McIntyre, could we get the lights up? I don't know that we're going to be reading our screens.
Can we get the lights up, please, videography?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. McIntyre, please continue.
My home address or the address of the property? Eight-eight-eight South Gaylord, Denver, Colorado, eight-zero-two-zero-nine. So in two thousand and twelve, I was shown this property by an organization called Wild Bird Rehabilitation, Rescue and Rehabilitation, as a perfect place to rehab and re, and birds that have been injured or sick. In the early two thousand and thirteen, I did purchase that property with the intent of providing a pro, piece of property for them to build the facility on, that I have a, um, a lease with them that made everything, I was like the property, the mortgage holder, and they were responsible for everything that happened on the property to the property from that date forward. So, um, in the meantime, the company has, the organization has not been able to fulfill their obligation to build on the property. So I brought a known history with me of the barn that's located there. In nineteen fifty, per the Jefferson County Assessor's Office, and I sent that, that you all have this piece of paper, that, um, it says it looks like the barn was built in nineteen fifty. That's an email from Laura Davenport at the Jefferson County Assessor's Office. In nineteen ninety-eight, the historic designation was granted by the City of Wheatridge. The request states, "Little is truly known about the original construction date of the barn or who the barn was constructed for." In twenty nine, twenty oh-nine, there was a bad storm and a tree fell on the sod house that was on that property. The sod house did not have a historic designation, and it was damaged and was late, was, an abatement order stated that the, that the home had to be removed. The abatement order also stated that the barn remains since it is historic. It will be a huge problem and liability if it is accidentally damaged or destroyed in any way. So in two thousand and thirteen, as I said, I purchased the property for, it's for the birds, or for the Wild Bird Information and Rehabilitation. At the time that I bought the property, it was not disclosed to me, either in the buyer-seller contract or in the title search, that there was any historic designation on the barn or on the property. So at the time that I purchased this, it was unknown to me, the designation of the barn, and it was in the, um, the buyer-seller agreement described the barn as in poor condition, which I wrote off, that, I acknowledged that in writing. In two thousand and nineteen, this year, the lease between Wild Bird and myself was terminated without having made any improvements on the land or the barn. No funds have been put into the barn by Wild Bird or by me. The mark, the barn has further deteriorated, becoming a public nuisance, a vandalism risk and a potential danger. In its present condition, it serves no public purpose. The next page that I have for you is from Laura Davenport, saying it looks like the barn was built in nineteen fifty, and all the document numbers of owners. The ta, the next page is the r, tax statement that I've gotten every year, which states on the tax statement that our air, records indicate that there are no improvements on this property. So in the next two pages are the petitions that I made to the city for the, um, removal of the historic designation. So what I'd like to do is have people ask me questions. I'm open to answering any kind of questions that you have, and if I haven't made anything clear, I'll be glad to go over that.
Uh, if, if that's, we're gonna go, we're gonna go to comments from public first, and then we're gonna come back for questions. So you'll have the opportunity to answer questions if council has them.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go now to, um, I have, uh, several people signed up to speak, uh, and our first speaker, and when I call your name, if you'd come to the podium and give us your first name and last name, and spell your last name, and give us your address. Our first speaker is Bonnie Botham, and Claudia Worth is on deck.
My name is Bonnie Botham, B-O-T-H-A-M. My address is two thousand and five Willow Lane, Lakewood, Colorado, eight oh-two-one-five. Mayor Starker and honorable council members, we thank you so much for your service to our beautiful community. I lived thirty-two years in Wheatridge. I currently reside in Lakewood, and I am current treasurer of the Wheatridge Historical Society. We had every intention of getting you our letter regarding this historic designation and our feelings, our opinions about it. The Wheatridge Historical Society believes that history is the foundation for strong, vibrant communities. That place becomes a community when wrapped in human memory is told through family stories, tribal traditions, and civic commemorations, including discussions about our roles and responsibilities to each other and the places we call home. The identified accessory structure noted in the agenda item is a beautiful barn. It's located on the property at one-fourteen eighty West Forty-Fourth Avenue in Wheatridge. The Historical Society notes that this barn has already withstood the test of time. It's already gone through the rigorous process to receive local historic designation. At this time, we see no change to the barn's connection to James H. Baugh on whose property the barn was built, no change to the barn's connection to Charles Townsend, who was one of the many second-wave settlers in the area who owned the barn, and no change to the barn mentioned in the Williams family document of nineteen oh-seven. Therefore, we see that there need be no change in its local historic designation. We believe history is a catalyst for economic growth. Communities with cultural heritage institutions and strong sense of historic character attract talent, increase tourism revenues, enhance business development, and fortify local economies. One project we have all applauded and praised is the Fruitdale Lofts, built within the school building and repurposed for future generations as housing, thus preserving its historic value, on the outside anyhow. We ask council to continue these types of policies that encourage the repurposing of our historic buildings. We as a society and our community and city must do all in our power to support property owners and developers who are willing to preserve our shared heritage. History is the foundation for future generations. The Wheatridge Historical Society asks that you do not remove this barn's historic designation, but rather work with the owner to make the space usable for future generations, if not at its current location. Then, with the help of a new owner or current owner of the barn, consider permanently moving it to the city park at Forty-Fourth and Robb, known as the Baugh House property. This would then allow the society and the city to care for the building and make it available for use by the public. At this point, I want to interject my opinion that a feasibility study would, of course, have to make sense to all the parties involved, should this come down to, uh, moving the barn. Please, this evening, vote no on the removal of the local historic designation for this barn. Thank you. Sincerely, the Board of Directors of the Wheatridge Historical Society.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Claudia Worth, and Claudia Callis on deck.
My name is Claudia Worth. I've been involved with the Historical Society for forty-two years, uh, serving as president, vice president, on the board, whatever, as a member. Lived in the city for fifty years. When the Joy, when Joy Williams came to us and asked us if we could put a local designation on the barn, we said yes. And at that time, we had an extensive historic designation ordinance, which was later changed. It did not provide for the historic designation to be removed at that time. So when Joy left, she was very happy because her kids would know that the old barn that she had played in as a child would still be there. She had to move to Idaho for some reason, and I don't remember what it was. And yes, the house was destroyed in two thousand and nine by the tornado, or, I called it a mega burst, but nobody agreed with me, so... But anyway, the cottonwood next to it fell on it, and the bricks collapsed. It was a brick house. It wasn't a sod house. The sod house is a national historic site, and we take care of it, and I helped say that, too. Okay, in nineteen ninety-nine, Bob Olson got a grant from the State Historical Society to identify all the houses in Wheatridge built before nine, eight, built before nineteen-twenty. That was our cutoff date. And this was part of that survey, so it is recorded with the State Historical Society. And I, I just wanna read you a little bit of this. And I just want to read you a little bit of this. And I'm sorry I didn't make a copy, but if you'd like a copy, I'll give my copy to Janelle and she can make a copy for you. He turned this in April 14, 1999. And it lists all the things on it, but I just noted a couple of the, uh, land of the things that I thought you might like to know. Associated buildings, features, or objects. And this was the stuff that the State Historical Society required. The Townsend-Williams residence is on the same parcel. This building is a brick two-story house with entry on the north wall, which sits back from approximately 175 feet from West 44th. Entry to the property is between the stem of two former trees adjacent to West 44th Avenue. A small shopping center is on the front, 125 feet of the adjacent property at 1144 or West 44th Avenue. However, the rear 240 feet of that lot is vacant pasture. There are extensive dark kennels on the adjoining property, I think it's to the west. He has east on here. No other buildings remain on the Williams property. The agricultural history. Date of construction is estimated between 1860 and 1880. Baugh settled the land and built his log cabin in 1859. It is a national historic site. And I haven't seen any of you but Leah down there, and I think you've been down there too, Mr. Matthews. But it is all restored and is, we manage the property for the city and take care of it, and it's delightful to see. Every farmer had a barn. And this happens to be a very large barn, the largest one that we know of in the city of Wheat Ridge. You could drive a team of wagons and the wagon into the barn, unhook the horses, put them in the stalls, and leave the wagon under shelter. We believe that it might have been used as a waystation. As we've researched James Baugh, he was an entrepreneur. He came out west in 1858 to the mining camps and decided he'd make more money if he came down here and raised produce to send to the mining camps, which he did. And many other, other early farmers did too. The sod house and the barn, we know the sod house was built before 1864, and we assume it was there when Baugh moved. He doesn't talk about it, except that he has four people in 1860 living on the property. We assume they lived in the sod house. The construction history. The construction date is undetermined. Based on type of construction, it was built during the 19th century. In 1898, Charles and May Townsend purchased almost 30 acres south of the county road from James Baugh. By 1907, excuse me, George Williams had ownership of 20-acre parcel of land. All three early owners, Baugh, Townsend, and Williams, were farmers who could have had need for a barn. The barns appears to have been constructed at one time without additions or significant alterations. How much, before 1890, the barn was built has not been determined. Precise determination date of the construction would be difficult based on lack of historical records from that era. And he's noted down here that the Williams family refers to the old barn on the property when they purchased it in 1907. So that makes it well over 100 years old. And it was that tornado thing we had in 2009. One of the earliest settlements in the Denver metropolitan area occurred along Clear Creek Valley in 1859, the year following the first commercially viable discoveries of gold and the part of Kansas Territory to later become Colorado Territory. James Baugh settled in the area, acquiring a quarter-mile-wide parcel of land adjacent to the north bank of Clear Creek. That parcel was one mile deep, and I can't read, it's blurred. Letter acquired titled to the 160-acre site providing documents. He had built a one-and-a-half-story log cabin prior to 1862. Other additions of Baugh's 1859-60 occupation include ditchwater rights, Colorado Society of Pioneers documentation, and newspaper accounts. Those accounts in the late 1860s do not mention a barn. Baugh sold most of his Wheat Ridge land in 1889. He notes in one of his papers that he sold the land because it was getting too crowded. There were 24 farmers between young fielding and where the Clear Creek crosses 44th. When he moved to an area east of Longmont, now near the town of Meade, Weld County, Colorado, Mary Townsend purchased 29.507 acres from Baugh on September 28, 1889. The deed was recorded in Book 52 at page 595. Charles Townsend had a relative long time in Jefferson County clerk, as clerk and recorder. Al Townsend, George Williams bought a 20, a 20-acre parcel as recorded in Book 154 at page 111. The Jefferson County Assessor's Office lists the year built of the house as 1892. The Williams, Williams family refers to the old barn on the property when they purchased it in 1907. A purchase price of $3,000 for 30 acres of land, only half of which was prime agricultural land, seems to have higher price for unimproved for Devalley and in 1888. It is a significant historical site. Talking to some old timers, and they're now dead, I can't call them up, I'm sorry, we asked about the old barn, and they said probably was a waystation, not a stage stop, a waystation. It's four miles to James Baugh House from Denver. It's four miles from Denver to Golden, and a good team of horses could do that if they had a break. And, and their horses were treated better than your Cadillacs, I'm sure. But the significance of the barn is there. It is the oldest barn that we can find. In 1859, was only 20 years after being foreclosed in 1839. This was all prairie out here. We, um, I, when the lady that owns it said that they were going to put a bird sanctuary in there, we were thrilled because we knew with the adjacent to the green belt that has over 287 different birds down there. At the last count I got, it would have been ideal. And I'm sorry that the wildlife people never took hold of it. The property, yeah, it hasn't been improved, but the barn is just as sturdy as it ever was. The foundation is poured concrete, and you can see how they poured it. If you look on the outside, they used, I said plywood. I didn't think they used, had plywood back then. My husband corrected me that the Egyptians had plywood. So I don't, I don't know, but it looks like they put plywood up, poured a section, waited till it cured, added the plywood, and put another, the concrete I think is about 12 feet high. The wood part of the barn, I don't know, maybe eight, 10 feet high? I don't know. I, I never measured, took measurements on it, because I thought it was okay. I never dreamed that the historical designation would be in question. We have a couple suggestions. One of it would be to donate the barn to the city or to the historical site, that part of the land. And like they said, we could move it. I asked the mover, and he looked at it, the one that moved our brick more, our brick post office, that staff of the city said we couldn't move it because it was old brick and it would fall apart. Well, no, they moved it. They wrapped it up like a Christmas package and they moved it right in front of your dad's house, Ken, uh, whatever, Christie. And it, and now it's restored and it's on the, on the historical property in the historic park, but, so it could be moved. I would think we'd want to put it on a concrete thing. That would be the expensive thing, is pouring all that concrete, unless we did like they did. They used river rock, lime, and sand, which is how they poured concrete. It's lasted for 100 years, but I imagine we'd have to have a 20-foot foundation on it. That has no foundation under it. Neither did the Baugh House, neither does the sod house, and neither does the 1910 museum. They just didn't do it. As long as you didn't break the skin of the earth, you didn't have to put a foundation. They just built it right on down, and nothing has ever shifted or anything. I thought if it was donated to the city, you're looking for an art center? May 13th, somebody was talking about an art center? Well, that's perfect. You could have, they could do all kinds of things. As an artist, it could be studio, studios. It could be an art gallery. They could have all kinds of things. The Quilters Club would love to hang quilts in there. It could be all kinds of things, and it could be used without destroying the front part of the property, which would be, still be available for development. To tear that building down is gonna cost a pretty penny. That's not gonna be cheap. They have to dispose of all the concrete, and I don't know what they're gonna do with those logs, but it is a sturdy building, and it is not a hazard to anybody. Yes, it looked bad when she bought it, needed a new roof. Somebody put a new roof on it. I don't know who did, and it looks pretty good now. So that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Claudia Callis, and John Clark on deck. And Ms. Callis, Carol Matthews has donated her time to you.
Claudia Callis, 8701 West 38th Avenue. I've spoken to you through the years many times about the various buildings that we've saved. Claudia has given you all the history that we really, uh, know at this time. But thinking back to how many barns there used to be in Wheat Ridge, to save one barn of the many that have long since gone, and a barn that has withstood over 100 years, seems like it ought to be possible to do that in Wheat Ridge before every, every piece of land is filled in and no chance of that. We've hoped for a barn at the Baugh House. We had in mind a barn raising, um, down the road, that we would have something like a pole barn, but, um, here it is, right there across the street, but, um, not, not handy to move, that's for sure. All right, well, I just want to say, because there's nothing much I can add to Claudia's remarks tonight, but tomorrow night we have at the Wheat Ridge Historical Park, the end of the season potluck supper. I believe you've all been invited. Some of you I've seen at our events, but not all of you. 5 o'clock tomorrow evening, 4610 Robb Street. Our new president, Ruth, is grilling hamburgers, and we wanted to extend our invitation to one and all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is John Clark, and Lionel Smith on deck.
Uh, my name is still John Clark, and I still live at 4665 Swadley Street. As the crow flies, it's probably less than a half a mile from this barn. And I will tell you in, in my, in my years that I love barns. I have calendars with barns on them. My wife loves barns, and my kids really dig barns, and barns are cool. My children have both had the honor of raising livestock up at the Moore Farm up in Arvada. If you don't know where that's at, it's 72nd Ward. Through 4H, the Moore Farm, that, at least the farm, to the best of my regulation, was, was founded about 1908, and it has a huge barn on it. And if you have never been in a barn, if you've never just stood in a barn and looked at the architecture and the way it's built, I implore you to do so because it is, it is not a two-by-four from the Home Depot, okay? It is, it is completely different, and they are, they're built to stay. And I mean, to me, maybe I'm weird, but I can sit there and stare at a barn for hours. I had my oldest son's senior pictures taken at the Moore Farm. So I just really, I really dig the agriculture. I really dig barns, and I really would have hoped, and I, and Scott, I appreciate the fact that you're not going one way or the other, that you're, what you're here for. I wish staff would have been able to tell us the historical, the dates, the people, the size. And in 1998, when it was designated as a historical site, um, there was obviously eight council members that, that decided that yes, it needs to be a historical site. I would have appreciated if, if staff would have at least given me those council members' names, maybe talked to those council members, maybe did a little bit more research, but here's the thing, I looked it up myself. Again, I won't check out my own groceries at the Walmart, but I, I'm gonna do this work. Two of them are in the room right now, two of the members. One I see probably twice a week for lunch. There is at least one that I know of that is deceased, but I, I also see another one on there. I'm not gonna sit here and name them, but before you make that decision, it would seem to me that you would want to know what their reasoning was, what their thoughts were in 1998, why they deemed it to be a historical site. That would be what I would want to do. And I really appreciate the Historical Society for what, everything they do, but for coming out tonight and then giving me that information and giving you all that information, because we didn't get it from the city. I will defer a little bit to the Historical Society. I'm gonna disagree with you on, on one point, and I'm sorry. I want that barn to stay right where it's at. You, we start talking about moving barns, and I think it could be done. We have technology that could probably move it to Mississippi if we wanted to. But here's the deal, guys. You guys aren't stupid. That barn is sitting on 1.15 acres. If you give up the historical designation, move the barn, what's next? Does anybody want to tell me? We, because we all know, right? 1.15 acres of A1, ag land. Do we have to, do we have to discuss history? 4435 Tabor, 4440 Tabor, 11661 West 44th. 4435 Tabor, 4440 Tabor, 11661 West 44th, ag land, ag land, ag land, ag land. 24 units, 44 units. We know what's going to happen. I'm not saying that this woman is going to build 18 units, but I will virtually guarantee you, if you let that historical marker go, within 60 days, there will be another yellow sign on that fence and we all know it. And if you can look in your heart and say, ah, I can't believe that, or you're going to tell me, well, the rules tell us that we can't look at what's going to happen in the future, that's BS. Because we know in 60 days, there will be another yellow sign for a zone change. MUN, PRD, 18 units. So I prefer that the barn sit right where it's at, stay there, come up with something. The Moore Farm houses my kids' pigs, a couple steers, they do check-ins. You know, we have that distinct ability because it's a, it's a working farm. And if you take that barn off or just simply let that barn be tore down, you'll have 18 units within a year and a half. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lionel Smith.
Honored counsel, I'm a Wheat Ridge native. I was born before the city was. And I'm, I'm here to support my friends. There's eight of us from the Historical Society. I really don't have anything to add than what you've heard. I had to drive back and forth several times today to even see the barn and find it. So that does not probably support our cause, but it is, it is, and then I, I looked at some pictures from what's inside. I thought, maybe there's something we're salvaging, but it doesn't appear to be any plows or tools or anything like that. I'm a, I'm a member of the, lifetime member of the Island Pond Vermont Historical Society as well. That's my ancestral home from my family. And they have lots of barns. It's Vermont. They have no shortage of barns. And again, as a Wheat Ridge native, lived here my whole life except for a couple when the Army put me somewhere else. I, I don't know we got too many barns left.
Thank you. That's all the speakers that I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone who has not signed up who would like to speak? Please come to the podium and I have to ask you if you, did I, did you, okay, and if you would give us your name and address, please.
Ruth Baranowski, 10430 West 47th Place, Wheat Ridge, Colorado.
And if you would please spell your last name. Thank you. Please continue.
I'm interested that staff didn't do a lot of research. No offense, staff, but you have a Wheat Ridge Historical Society. We have documentations from when the city started incorporating. We have Louise Turner's as CD clerks documentation. We have stuff you're looking for. I understand property owners' rights. I understand that that comes up as an issue a lot of the times here at City Council. But I also understand that we lose a lot of history when we don't consider the history we have. Some people might think pioneer history, not that interesting, but it's only what, 1859? What, East Coast has, you know, 200-year-old, 1776 stuff? Nah. What do we have? Pioneer stuff. And that's important. Personally, history at all levels is important. What we did yesterday is important. What you do today is important. And it informs our future decisions. Your decision tonight on whether or not you remove this local landmark status informs the decision of the future of this city, of yourselves, of ourselves, of what we leave as a legacy. Personally, as a board member of the Historical Society, we went around and around about what were the possibilities for this barn. A lot of us wanted to just say, council, really stop, leave the barn where it is. But we want to be respectful of property owner, owner's rights. We want to say, hey, work with us. We did a lot of research on organizations that could move historic barns. Yeah, it's very expensive, but that's something we as a Historical Society would work towards. We have our 501(c)(3) status now. We can get grants. We would work with the city. We would work with the property owner on restoring the barn, on keeping it where it is. We know, as Mr. Clark said, what would happen if that designation is removed. Historically, it's not very hopeful that the barn would stay as is for a future developer or a future sale. We personally think it would be removed and that is property owner's rights. But as a local landmark, it offers the city something. It offers us. It offers our future generation something. Personally, as a new resident of Wheat Ridge, seven years, still brand new, sometimes it shocks me, the buildings that we remove, the areas that we raise for new development. Not, not because I'm a, not a fan of new development, not because I'm not a fan of progress and change, just because we don't acknowledge any of our history. We let it go and it will never come back, except for as pictures, except for as distant memories. We don't respect our history. What are we even leaving for our children? That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, were you, did you get sworn in?
I did not.
Okay. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the, or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you understand it?
I do.
Please continue. Give us your first name and last name. Please spell your last name and your address.
Hello, my name is Brandy Zamudio, Z-A-M-U-D-I-O. I live at 4725 Otis Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado, 80033. I came here tonight not knowing I was going to come up here and speak. However, I feel this is very important and I had to speak to it. I'm a Colorado native. I am not a Wheat Ridge native. I was born and raised in Longmont. Somebody had mentioned Meade earlier. My father was born in Meade, in a barn. I feel very strongly about this in regards to the growth of Wheat Ridge. I asked the council members to please consider the history of Wheat Ridge. I mentioned that I grew up in Longmont. I sometimes visit Longmont and am disappointed in the things that have changed due to growth. I am a proud Coloradan and I'd like the future residents of Wheat Ridge to be proud as well when either they live in Wheat Ridge or they come back to visit Wheat Ridge, they look at the historic things that are in, that are in Wheat Ridge and are proud that either their family themselves came from that. It's a, it's a tough decision when you're trying to grow a city but not lose the past. I ask that you as council members, and thank you for your service, by the way, I, we all appreciate everything you do, but I ask you to consider saving this building because of the growth and the future growth of Wheat Ridge. If we start taking down barns, buildings, historical buildings, whatever that may be, like somebody mentioned early, what's next, earlier, what's next? Where does that stop? We've lost enough of our history. We should at least study up on why that building was still there. Have strong reasons as to take that building down if you choose to. I understand property rights. I'm a property owner myself. I get it. But it was made, that historical site, before the current property owner. And I'm sorry, but City Council voted on it. They were educated on it. There's documents that show the history of that building. So before you make the decision to one way or the other, take it down, move it, whatever, and by the way, I do believe it should stay where it's at because once you start moving things, that, that's not really history. You know, that barn was in that position for a certain reason, four miles from Golden, four miles from Denver. There's a significance to that. So as a Wheat Ridge citizen, I ask our city government to please take all of those factors into account. All of the speakers here today, please take those points into account before you make any decisions on the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight who has not spoken who would like to speak on this item? All right, I'm going to move now to questions of, yes ma'am. You may, you may come back, yes.
I also am a proud Coloradan. I'm a third-generation Coloradan and I majored in history in my undergrad degree, so I respect history. I love history. When I saw that property, I was enthralled by the barn. I thought it's beautiful. It is quaint. And I thought it might be some way that Wild Bird could incorporate it into their building plans. As it turned out, the, it's in terrible condition. And it's interesting to me that, I've got more pictures that I can send around, that the inside of the barn has a poured scored cement floor and the, the upper loft of the barn has a locked door on it. When you slide back, the big barn door, there's a locked door and I have no, I do not have the key to it. I don't know when it was put there, how it was put there, or anything else, but it's a blond wood door with a brass doorknob. And it, I know that Wild Bird is storing bird cages in that upper level. They did not put the door in there according to them. It was there before. And I think that the building was used by a construction company at one time because I have pictures that I'm going to pass around that show the, the cement scored floor and fluorescent lighting and work benches and pegboards on the walls. So Wild Bird was unable, Wild Bird was unable to retrieve their cages on the upper level because they said that the floor is in such bad condition and the steps going up to the upper level where that barn, sliding barn door is with the blond wood door are in such bad shape that they were afraid to let the volunteers go up to take the bird cages out. So the bird cages are still there. So one of the things that was partially a problem about building the building there was the fact that the infrastructure, there is no infrastructure at all. There's no water. There's no sewer. There's no electricity. And the fire department said that they would need a wide pad that was very, very deep if it was going to be used for public consumption at all, if the public was going to be present on that piece of property, that they needed this pad where they could go all the way to the back, turn around, because they couldn't back out onto 44th. So it had to have a big, wide, deep pad. And so the infrastructure became totally prohibitive for Wild Bird to build the building as well as poor management of Wild Bird dwindled away all their money. So like I said before, when I bought the property, it was not disclosed to me either through the, the buyer seller agreement or the title search, which was done by fidelity, that there was any historic designation on it at all. So I bought this piece of property as a philanthropic gift of my heart for the birds and it is a perfect place for the birds with the, be able to release and mount the back, but that's not a possibility anymore. So I would be glad to donate the building to the city of Wheat Ridge. I do not have the finances to pay for the moving of the building or the infrastructure to make it feasible to have people visiting the barn on that piece of property. And I don't know what it could be used for. You suggested art studios, workshops. It is in bad condition. It would take major, major renovation, I think, in order to make that work out. I don't know how long it's been since you've been there, but it's been my, oh, I don't know how long it's been since you've been, any of you from the Historic Society have been there, but in the six and a half years that I've owned it, it has deteriorated more. And as I said, when I bought it, the disclosure from the seller was that it was in very poor condition, that I acknowledged. It is in poor condition. So I am willing to answer any questions, any thoughts?
Thank you. Well, we're going to go to council for questions. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do have a couple of questions. When did you realize that it had a historic status?
I didn't realize that until this spring when I was doing, when I was working on terminating the lease between Wild Bird and me because with the lease designated that they had full control of the property and that it was basically, I was the mortgage holder. They were paying me interest only because it was a philanthropic proposition on my part. So they were paying interest only. And when it came down first to do time to, to cut the ties between Wild Bird and me, they told, one of the, the acting director told me that she had heard that the barn was historic. That was the first I'd heard about it. I asked her how she knew that and she said one of the wild, the rehabbers had told her. So I'm not sure how they even got the information. I, I'm not, I don't know.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? We'll start with Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. My questions are for the staff. Would we have to renew, remove the historical designation to move the barn and then redesignate it? Or could the historical designation stay on it and then the barn could be moved?
That's a good question. I, I don't necessarily know the answer. You know, we don't handle this issue very frequently. We've only got a very small handful of buildings that are locally designated as historic. So probably have to look into that a little more. I'm sure there's a, I mean, a way to figure that out if it's council's desire to be part of moving it someplace else.
So I guess my question is, is, is the historical designation on the building itself or on the building and the land it sits on?
I believe it's on the building, Scott. Is that?
That's my impression as well, as it was specifically for the Joy Williams barn.
Sure.
And then do we know the difference between what is a, a local historical designation versus a state historical designation?
Sure.
So it's locally designated historically, but is it also in the, then the state?
It's not on either the state or the federal registries.
Ms. Weaver.
Thank you. Is there only one type of historical designation locally?
Yes.
Okay. What happens if the guts inside the building have been significantly modified without knowledge of the historic status? Does that change anything?
In terms of its ability to be locally designated?
Or to stay locally designated? Or to stay locally designated?
I don't think we have clear, clear criteria on that.
Okay, and if, I'll come back, I need to formulate my other question.
I'm going to go to the other side of the aisle here, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have so many questions. It's a quasi judicial item again, so quasi judicial raises its ugly head. So I couldn't ask any questions or seek any information outside of this, this hearing. I think our staff dropped a huge ball the size of the Goodyear Blimp on this issue. At the very least, in our, in our work here, I would like to have seen the original ordinance, a copy of that, so we would have some idea of why it was designated as historical in the first place. I think that would be kind of germane to the issue. Are there no deed restrictions? I mean, I would have to address some of this, I think, to Mr. Dahl as our attorney, how do we do something that creates this kind of catch 22 where someone buys a piece of property and doesn't know that it's got a historical building on it that's going to be an issue down the road? Was that not recorded somewhere in a deed somewhere or, or brought to bear? How does that happen? And of course, I couldn't research that, and I'd like to have an answer on that before we make any decisions. I'm appreciative of the owner's offer to donate what's kind of a useless piece of concrete to her, but to donate it to the city, and, and she would like our assistance in helping her get out from underneath the problem that she has. And for the life of me, I can't figure out why we didn't approach the Historical Society. We have budgeted money for the Historical Society, we preach this is our 50th anniversary year, and yet we act like they just didn't even exist. And obviously, there's a wealth of knowledge out there, even if it's anecdotal, it may lead to be able to find some actual factual paper trail or something if we had tried. I mean, this is just another deal that we just didn't put any effort into. We'd say, oh, it's an old piece of junk barn, so we'll just bring it up to council and give them the minimum amount of information and, and go for it. And I'm, and I apologize to you, ma'am, I'm sorry that somehow or other you ended up in the middle of this confrontation, and it sounds like you were well intentioned, but I guess, Mr. Dahl, can you answer how, you were probably the city attorney, how did we end up with an ordinance here and a historical designation that never got recorded anywhere?
Well, I can tell you that the code requires a recording of a memorandum of action within, it says 15 days after council designates. It's to, the city shall cause to be recorded with the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder a memorandum of the designation. So identifying the property. I have no idea if that happened, so one of two things is probably true, either it got recorded and was not picked up in the title report when the property was purchased, and sometimes title companies miss things.
I would certainly like to have an answer on that question, because I think it would affect the decisions that we make on how we remedy, I think that's the legal term, remedy her issue and the Historical Society's and the city's interest. I think we need to know all these facts. I'm not even sure we can even vote on this tonight, but I'll talk about that later. I'll pass right now to somebody else.
I have some of that information, and I've got it with me. So I did a lot of research after I'd found out that there was potentially a historic designation on the barn. So I have a copy of the memorandum. What I found was that the memorandum was supposed to be filed within 15 days, as you said, and it wasn't filed within that 15 days. That I have a piece of, I have that in my bag there. I also have the copies that the Historic Society has when they applied for the historic designation, but I didn't have that when I bought the property. I've done all that research since April, or since March, and have found that out. So.
There goes my point, the owner could find out this information, but it couldn't be presented to us by staff. I'm really upset.
May I respond?
No, I've got the reputation for being the council curmudgeon.
Mr. Matthews, is this, can I answer your question?
I can speak here first.
Okay, we'll finish. Then I'll answer your question. After you berated staff.
If staff messes up, I'm going to bring it to the forefront.
Well, I disagree.
At one point in time, I asked someone what my reputation was, and it was the council curmudgeon, and I thought, yeah, that maybe fits, and then I questioned myself, I thought, what does the, what's a curmudgeon? And I immediately thought of Mr. Dahl, our friendly attorney, I thought he would make a great curmudgeon. But I looked up the dictionary definition, and it's an angry old man, and I keep getting angry because of the way we handle issues in the city, and that's why I ran in the first place. And it's not politically correct, I'm not supposed to correct staff. Baloney, I think if we've done something wrong, it's helped us as a council to step up and admit it, and that we're having, we're having a history recently of doing a lot of things wrong, especially ones around ex parte issues.
All right, Mr. Dahl, would you like to?
Yeah, I would like to. You finished, Mr. Matthews?
For now.
For now? Okay, good. Thank you for berating staff on this, as you always do. This is.
I also, I also compliment staff when they do things well.
Mr. Matthews, it's my turn.
Go for it.
This property is owned by a private property owner, not the city of Wheat Ridge. We have a process in our code to remove a historic designation. I, I could, I could see somebody up here on this dais, if, if we did more research on this, it would have been the opposite, that count, that city staff is trying to direct this to save this property. That's not our role. There's a process in the city code, and that process has been followed.
I would disagree with that, because we've not got sufficient information in order to properly deal with this issue.
Property owners here who gave you information, the Historical Society here has gave you plenty of information.
Okay, so let's, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I did also try to research the 1998 designation, and I was unable to find it in the archives. And so the wealth of knowledge with, from the Historical Society has definitely given me a little bit more context, and I have appreciated that. I did have a question, so there is no other structure on this parcel, correct? So it's just the barn?
Correct. The house was, was raised after it was significantly damaged in that 2009 storm, as, as has been noted by others?
Okay, because online, when you type in the 11480 West Forty Fourth Avenue, which is actually different than the document that I received from the Historical Society, which is 11460, so I don't know the discrepancy there, but from online, it says, is a single family home that contains 2,510 square feet and was built in 1892. It contains three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and that the home was last sold for $145,000 in June of 2013, and I'm assuming that's when you bought it?
There wasn't, there was no home there.
There was no home?
No, there was no home there.
Okay, all right.
Well, all was there, all that was there was barn in poor condition.
Okay, so you would, you would also mention that you would be willing to donate this barn to the city, and just kind of from what I'm hearing, there's been a lot of miscommunication, a lot of, you know, misinformation or missed information, and so we are currently, we're actually going to be discussing it on the agenda item this evening about an art space. And so one of the feasibility studies includes looking for historical properties or properties that are important to the city of Wheat Ridge, that we want to try to rehabilitate into a space, a co-working space for artists where they can both work and live. So I don't know if maybe you would be willing, as the applicant, to postpone this issue, to maybe talk to the Historical Society, talk to city staff, and maybe determine a best case scenario for all parties involved? I mean, because you've, I mean, you have just stated that you're willing to donate it, and I don't know if that means moving the barn or, or what you foresee happening, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
I hate to say this, but it is a financial drain for me to maintain this, the taxes are over $4,000 a year, I'm paying over $600 a year for insurance, that it was very, it took me two months to even get insurance on it, and they won't insure the barn, it's just a liability insurance, and paying the interest on the loan. So I would like it resolved sooner than later, obviously, and I also think I might know where everything went wrong. One of you said something about 11460. Originally, that land was designated 11460, it's now 11480. 11460 is to the west, and 11440 is to the east. So it is, it's misnumbered, I don't know how that happened, that I didn't get in my research, I never figured that one out.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, the community development director would like to provide some more input.
Mr. Johnstone?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Number one, you know, we're certainly advocates of quality historic preservation. I spent thousands of hours as the project manager for the housing authority and the, and the city in preserving the Frutail School, I was instrumental in saving the water pump station at the Ashland Reservoir. That said, the city does not have a historic preservation master plan, we don't have any policy documents that would tell us that we should become generally advocates for historic preservation. We're not a certified local government, which is the, the status at the state level that recognizes that you're a qualified local government to become an advocate for historic preservation. Patrick's absolutely correct, when we opened the code to look at, at this request, there's a very clear section that applies, right? New property owner, no public money has been in it. So for us to take a step further, to reach out to the Historical Commission, which while they're a, a great group and potentially a great resource, they're not formally a part of the city in any way. So in our minds, that would, that would be us becoming advocates for preservation of the structure when it's council's decision to make that choice. So we didn't feel at all appropriate, and didn't feel like we had any policy direction that would suggest from this council or previous councils that we should be doing that research and bringing that to council to advocate for the preservation of the building, which again, is in private ownership. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is for city staff, there was a site plan that was recorded and developed in 2013 for this property, how does that site plan become affected by this removal of the designation?
I might defer to Scott on that one.
So back in 2013, that was an approved site plan for the Wild Bird redevelopment. They went through the process with the city and the fire department of getting an approval of a site plan on that site under the current A1 zoning, which would have been allowed, they also had a special use permit approved for that use. That site plan is a valid site plan, it was approved by the city, and they chose not to move forward with it for, as the applicant stated, financial reasons, it became cost prohibitive to build that fire turnaround, as well as the water infrastructure required for that building. So they actually took into account the building, kind of, it was on the site plan, but it wasn't being reviewed as part of the site plan, it was just there. So it was recognized, but it wasn't, nothing happened with it at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keter?
This is for Mr. Dahl, and builds a bit on Mr. Johnstone's comments. The code gives three criteria for removal of designated, of the historical designation and their alternative, you only have to satisfy one. If somebody satisfies that third one, how much discretion do you believe we even have to deny the application if somebody clearly meets the criteria in the code?
Well, you'll notice that the, the removal section defers to the earlier sections on process, and the earlier sections on process, I think, have the council, have the council acting may act or not. So in my opinion, if, even if there's evidence that satisfies a criteria, it is still your discretion, you're, if, to cut to the chase, you're not compelled, just because the criteria is satisfied, to, to vote to remove, it's still a discretionary act that you take.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Ms. Weaver?
I'm going to follow up on something that Councilwoman Dozeman was talking about. Having rehabbed some very old barns, it's quite costly, and, and I have a couple of questions. In the research that the Historical Society did, what, what is the starting number of, of moving a structure like this? And, and do you have a place in the site that it could go?
Yes, we have a place where it could go.
Would you, would you please go to the microphone and, and answer the question, please?
Yes, we have a place where it could go. Yes, the site would require work to move the barn too. The starting price point is $300,000, that's the lowest number that we could find, the highest is half a million.
Sure, and that's just for the moving?
That's just for moving, and that is distance, that was calculating for distance moving, the higher the, the farther away from where you want to move it, the higher the price went. This is a very short place, so we were hoping if we did a, I forgot the word, a study on whether or not it was viable, we were hoping to have it as an even lower number. The renovations is what made us all stop, but that price is still within something that we as a society decided that if it came to that, that is something we would be willing to tackle, that number.
Sure.
Which is very high.
Yeah. Would you be willing to work with an organization like an art space to, you know, as you talked about, the grants and, and things like that? Just, because I think there could, as, as Ms. Dozeman said, there could be a great synergy. I am, would love to see the barn stay on the property, but I also know the reality of rehabbing a barn and then sort of not having it accessible, as, as everyone's talked about. So I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
As the Wheat Ridge Historical Society, we have gone through years of extensive activity where we've saved buildings, where we've gone out into the community, and we've also hit those low points where we haven't done a lot. Something as president, I've heard again and again, is that, from the community, is that they would like us to be more involved in these kind of projects, they would like us to at least put the effort out there to do that, and what I've heard from my board is that, yes, these are projects we, we could be part of, that we want to be part of. So yes, as the Historical Society, we do want to be part of saving this barn and using it for future generations. I think it was a little clear in our letter that we would like to work with that. So yeah, we, we could, we could work with the Cultural Commission, we could work with the city, we could work with owner. We're willing, but it's, you know, it comes down to the cost, so.
Sure, sure.
Did that answer your question?
I, I think so, and then I just have, thank you very much. And then I just have one other question, I think probably for staff, what are the restrictions on, on rehabbing local historic status? Because I know that state and national can be very cost prohibitive because of the, what has to stay the same.
Right, and our process is not as stringent in that regard, in terms of the actual, at the local level. There is a process that's contemplated in the code for, I think, minor amendments and major amendments, so there's process described, but there's not really cut and dry standards of, you know, well-established things you, you absolutely cannot do, or things that have to stay.
But if I, as a private owner, owned this barn and was trying to rehab it, it's, it's something that the city does, it's not like an unmovable thing, like it, it's, it's a possible thing to, if we were to try, if I were to try, if I owned this barn and I tried to bring it up to code of an outbuilding, is that, would that be a reasonable thing?
Yes.
To think that I could do? Okay, thanks.
Mr. Dahl, did you have something?
Yeah, just something to add to the record too, and, and first, I'd like to apologize for, to Mr. Matthews for losing my temper, I guess I'm the grumpy old man tonight. But I did pull up the 1998 ordinance, the only thing that was in that ordinance that would give you any information of why it was saved was really nothing. It just says pursuant to the authority vested by the, the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, the Wheat Ridge City Council hereby designates the Joy Williams Barn as a historic landmark. Ridge City Council hereby designates the Joy Williams Barn as a historic landmark within the city of Wheat Ridge. No city of Wheat Ridge funds or manpower shall be used on this landmark so long as it remains in private property unless the city implements a future grant program for restoration of buildings in the city. That was the only information.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
So, I have a couple of follow-up questions, and I'll address that first. So, that means that we cannot, we cannot designate any money towards that, as long as it is on the land that it's on.
That's your ordinance from 1998.
Okay. And so, my other question was in regards to the 2013 site plan. So, when, that was after she had purchased the property and it was a site plan for the Wild Bird rehab, correct?
Yes, and Wild Bird did that.
So, Wild Bird?
Wild Bird did it. I had nothing to do with it.
Okay. And was it not disclosed at that point in time that this barn was historical? Did that not come in, like, into the conversation at all?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Why is that?
You know, I don't think we maintain a very good database of the local landmarks. Like, it's not a layer in our GIS, so it would have had to be kind of institutional knowledge that it was so designated, because, you know, it was prior to the staff's time here as to when that got designated.
Additional questions? Mr. Matthews?
Yes. Thank you. And I'm sorry, Mr. Goff, I'm, I'm short-tempered tonight. I do have a kind of a nagging question right now that comes up. And somebody mentioned that up until around 2013, there was also a house with the barn. And I'm, I'd like to ask the question, since we're at this hearing, if anyone from the Historical Society, or the city, or the current owner, has any idea why it was the barn only? While it appears that the house may have even been older, but why was the barn only that was given this historical designation?
Ms. Worth, would you please come to the podium then and give us that answer?
Joy didn't want to have the house as part of it, because she thought people would want to remodel it. And it was wonderful. In 1920, her mother painted everything pink, because that's what people did. And it was still pink inside. And it was a wonderful old home, but then it, you know, she had, I don't know how she had the foresight, but in 2009, when the tree hit it, it buckled that east wall. And when they built those, it was just the wall, you know? There was nothing in, it couldn't be repaired. So, it, she never wanted the house. She wanted the barn. She had memories of barn dances in there, of sleepovers and the hay upstairs and high school stuff going on and that kind of stuff. And so did her kids. So, she wanted the barn as a, as a local landmark. She didn't have time to go for a national or a state designation. And I want, it is eligible, if it's on the property. If we move it, it's not eligible for state or for national historic site designation. So, it would be better if we, you know, and I have all kinds of things. You could buy the whole land from the lady, and I didn't get her name. And as an arts thing, yes, you can do things that you want to inside a national historic site. The outside has to remain essentially the same. And it's under the Secretary of the Interior, and we have that information. But, you know, it's like city council, they change their, their rules. And so, I would suggest you get the thing from the Secretary of the Interior. And Dana Boeing in Denver changed many things. Fruitdale's school is the same outside as 15 apartments inside. That's okay. It's okay. It's got plumbing everywhere. It used to have four bathrooms. But, so you can adapt the inside of a building to what you want to use it for. And, and that would be, the Historical Society with the 501(c)(3), there are, I call it the gambling funds. When you go out and gamble, we get part of the money, the historical, the arts, and we can go for grants. And we've got over a million dollars' worth of grants from the State Historical Society in refurbishing and restoring the barhouse.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just one, one more thing, too, just real quickly. There, there was a second page to the ordinance, and it was recorded, the historic designation was recorded with the county on August 24th, which is within, within the 15 days. It's a date stamped from Jefferson County that it was recorded as a historic designation.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion in council discussion, does any councillor have other questions about the applicant or staff? Ms. Hoppe?
Sorry, so where it is now, the city can't put any money into it. But if it's moved, then does that change that ordinance to where we would be able to put money into it?
As long as it's not under private ownership.
Not under private, okay, thank you.
Are there, Mr. Matthews?
I think I should take this time to apologize to Mr. Johnstone. In the heat of, the minute I said some things I shouldn't have. I would take issue one, at one point, in that once we designated that as a city historical site, then we did have a vested interest in having some concerns over preserving it and what happened with it. But I appreciate, I'm sorry that I got upset.
Thank you. Okay, before I close the public hearing, Ms. Weaver?
I, I think I'm just a little confused. What, and, and this might be for our discussion, so please correct me if, are we discussing moving? Are we discussing something else, like dividing the land, which is what I heard Ms. Worth just say?
Changing the designation.
So, we're just discussing the designation?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Before I close the public hearing, is there any other discussion or, or questions for councillor staff? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mr. Matthews, a motion is in order. Or, this is number three, Leah. Ms. Dozeman?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 07-2019, an ordinance approving the removal of local historic status for an accessory structure at 11480 West 44th Avenue on property zoned agricultural 1A1 on second reading, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. One, the applicant has been determined to be eligible to apply for the removal of the historic designation per Section 26-913 of the city code.
Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. That concludes item number three. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and then we will be back.